Good evening, welcome to the April 23rd special board meeting. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have anything, no emails, Brian? We have, anybody from the audience, any public comment?
I would rather let you people do your job and maybe I'll come in at the end.
At the end? That would be fine, whatever you like. Okay, we have a discussion, I'm telling you, let me explain at least to the people why this is a special board meeting. What we're looking at tonight is a, our policy, it's 3.6 in our policy manual, and what has to do with either hiring and promoting, excuse me, for a non-union position within the township. We've had some debate on what we feel we'd like to see in this policy, or what we feel it should say about hiring, and once again, hiring and/or promoting from this. So what I'd like to do is, first off, if we could go through each individual, and I'll let you guys go first, and kind of explain what you would like to see in the 3.6, or what wording or verbiage you would like to see us go through. And Margaret, if you'd like to start, why don't we start with you?
Sure. I actually kind of came sort of prepared. And I think that, the only thing I did was kind of, I think, tighten this up a bit so that there is less confusion, or hopefully no confusion. I know that my commission, the police commission, follows the 6710 ordinance, which aligns to 3.6. But, so if we go through number one really quickly, a notice of position vacancy shall be developed and posted, and I say, through the coordinated effort of the corresponding commission, board liaison, and chairperson when applicable. Just so there's no confusion on that. Then number two, the position vacancy notice shall initially be published internally, based on the discretion of the commission liaison and chairperson. If posting externally is the agreed process, the position vacancy shall be published in the appropriate local newspaper, trade journals, et cetera. The reason I updated that is specifically, there are positions in police and fire that I don't believe should go externally as an immediate option. We have internal candidates, and I do not want to have any of those internal candidates think that they're being discounted or thought less of when they are more than capable. They have gone through tremendous training to be considered for a promotional opportunity. So that's why I updated that portion of number two. I don't know if we want to go through each item, or if you want me to just keep going. I just tweak things slightly, just in my opinion, so there's hopefully less confusion.
No, I think that's exactly what I was looking for, to get your view. And at the end of this, then, when we all speak, then we'll try and put something together that's palatable for all, that we think is reasonable for this section, so.
Okay.
Are you good? You just let me know.
There are some small things in number three and four. But again, my primary one was number two, that I just wanted to make sure we're clear on. The other ones I tweaked slightly, just so there's no confusion with commissions and, you know, their abilities to provide us with their recommended candidate.
All right, thank you. Mark, why don't you go?
Yes, sir. So, when this originally came up with our last promotion, the way it states in here, it says, "We must, or we will," as I read it and understand it, "publicize outside, and then conduct interviews, and take all the resumes, and so forth." With the last go around, that wasn't followed, it was done internally. I have no problem with an internal search first, in fact, I promote that. I fully agree with both police and fire, we should look in within first. And if we don't have any viable candidates, then we go to the outside. I know certain situations that occurs with certain departments and certain jurisdictions, not with every one of them. In most cases, you can't, in most cases, you can't promote within. Sometimes you cannot, sometimes there's a need for the change of culture, whatever the case may be, and then you go externally. I would simply like to see, in the very beginning, I'm actually okay with most of the policy. Just, I want to see in the very beginning, we do an internal search first, I like a cursory search. If there are no viable internal candidates, then we go to outside with publications, so forth and so on.
Gotcha.
That's where I'm at with it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Kevin, oh, we were just going down the line, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
No worries.
Kevin?
I do not, I think that what we have, the 3.6 employee selection that we currently have is, in my opinion, I think it's pretty good the way it is. And it's been around since, I think 1993 is as far back as I have been able to find it. So, I'm just going to read what my thoughts are. So, the policy and procedure, employee selection, section 3.6. During a previous, this is the history, during a previous board meeting, members of the board questioned proper posting of the position of fire chief and fire marshal. These members made it perfectly clear that the issue was not with the selection, but with the proper manner of posting the position. And the question then becomes, should the posting be implemented both pub, or implemented both publicly and internally? It is felt by many that a public posting presents many advantages. For example, it allows a greater selection to choose from. It allows us to view the kind of talent that is available outside the department. It allows us to compare this outside talent to the talent in our own department. It also, it allows an interview from which we can learn very much. For example, how other communities perform many of the same duties that we are required to perform. It provides a broader scope of the talent and experiences, experience available outside, both important factors in the selection process. It in number six, it endorses integrity and transparency, which I think is very important. Two important values that many of us promised the voters when we ran, that we would be transparent in what we did. Disadvantages, yes, it may take a little longer to review a few more resumes. We will have to pay a small fee to post the position publicly. But the most, among the most important things is, let's not forget that the checks and balances are already built into the system by using the proper ordinance and/or policy and procedure. The board still has the final say on selection. The commission has the final vote on bringing the selection to the board. We have, to have these policies and procedures in place for the commissions to follow these, then, we must allow the commission to do their job without interference. We should not develop additional committees, teams, to direct them on how to do their job. We're talking about the committees. They should be able to do what they have been, have been doing for the last, since 1993. This only further pollutes the process by adding different committees and commissions in. Having the procedure implement both public and internal postings is not only advantageous to Grozeal, but again, it endorses integrity and transparency, two important values that many of us board members promised to the community when we ran for office. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We're going down the line, but Mickey, if you'd like to go before me, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Let's hear what you have to say, and I'll go last.
So, maybe it's my background, but I guess I have some different opinions on how it would normally work. Working for, previously for Fortune 10 companies, having staffs that reported to me doing hiring and that type of work. Normally, the people closest to it are the ones that would decide and work, you know, internally with the recruiter, right? Do we want to go internally and post it? Do we want to go externally? There's always a preference for internal because this, what I'm saying, I think goes as well for the police department, but I'll talk specifically for the fire department. They're like a family, and culture matters, especially in this case with the voluntary workforce. So now, we do the right things, you do succession planning, you have a very qualified commission. We talked before about that, three attorneys, very successful businessman. The one attorney was Ford Office of General Counsel, right? I mean, it doesn't get any better than that. So you take these people that are close to it, you have Duncan Murdoch, who was a fire chief. I might be wrong, but I think it was around 30 years, and one of the most successful ones, right?
Fireman for 30, but probably 16, 15 for chief, yeah.
Yeah, ended up with chief.
That's correct, no, you're correct.
So, you have this very qualified commission, and what we're trying to do is tell them how to do the job. I know, I felt like I was being very, almost controlled on what I could do, when I could do it, who I had to tell, how the interview was conducted. It was very frustrating, and all at the same time, I knew we had strong candidates to interview. So now, the one thing is, going, forcing external, first of all, kind of takes the oomph out of succession planning, right? Because if we have some people in there, and we're training, and I'm talking about training every Wednesday night for hours, letting them know that the terrain of Grozeal, so I can go to anyone in there and say, "Hey, which bridge in Grozeal can you only get one fire truck over?" Or, "Where don't we have fire hydrants, and how do you get around it?" Things that it takes them years to learn from just doing the job on Grozeal. And I'm going to go to them and say, "Well, you know what? Even though I have very qualified candidates, I'm going to go external, and I'm going to take money from the fire department's budget, minimum of approximately $500 to post a job, where I already know that I have qualified candidates." Now, I think it should be that the commission says, "Hey, you know what? We've posted it, we're looking at who we have, maybe we do need to go external, or maybe we don't." Because the bottom line is, we have to deliver a qualified candidate to the board, or the board will vote it down. So, when we're trying to do that, we're trying to do our jobs, you know, don't tie our hands. And it also feels like, and maybe it's me, but Margaret and I are public safety partners, and I think we do a pretty good job, and we've gotten some good feedback. But, for some reason, all the focus is on fire and police, almost as if there's a mistrust of us that we're not capable of doing our jobs. And so, it's starting to almost become offensive to me. I do, you know, I've had enough people in my career, I know when to go internal, I know when to go external. We know we have to deliver. As board liaisons, we should be trusted to do our jobs. And I just think, you know, if I changed anything, I would say, give the commission automatically the right to interview. I would say the commission and the township manager, that that's who the interviewing group is, right? And then let them decide how to get you that qualified candidate. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mickey.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, I can't say one thing before you get started. My comments, and I'm sure maybe most up here, are not directed just towards the police or fire. This for every position.
I understand, no, I understood that.
So, I wasn't picking, the fires happened to be first ones up, police are coming up next.
Yep, I understand it.
Okay.
No, no, I understand what you're trying to say. I got two areas I want to talk about. First off, I believe that the township manager knows our individuals better than anybody within the township. So I believe that he, that's why the new, in the policies, it does say the township manager. And I do believe that the commission of that, our members of that commission, who's ever doing the promoting, hiring, and Derek should be the group that does the interviews. That's separate. And the reason is that Derek, again, he knows the working, the workings of the day-to-day operations of the township better than anyone. And the commissions, and nothing against commissions, but sometimes the commissions in the past have made decisions on other issues. And I know that the commissions are the backbone, but I have to say I would like Derek on there, and then they come to the board, and we obviously do that, that's separate.
I agree, and I think he has the expertise in hiring, too.
Absolutely. And they can keep the questioning correct, like some commissions are new, and they might ask a question, it's true. That's okay, because they're new, they just need to learn. Some things are appropriate and some aren't. So, Derek being there can guide that. Now, with that said, the only part in this that I would like to see is it's non-union. So any non-union come from, there's people in DPS that are non-union, there's people in fire, there's people in police, there's people in other parts of the township that are non-union. Okay, so that position, not saying you can't hire a union person for non-union, that's sometimes where they come from. So, I want to give an example, and the reason why I'm so passionate about this, is that I lived that. Obviously, you know I was the police chief here for 10 years. But I went up the ranks, and if I always saw you going outside along with inside, there's a little slight chance that you might have a political issue and they go outside. There's a slight chance that something can occur, and they go outside. That's fine, because the township board has the final say. But what I would like to see is all union positions be posted internally first. If the commission and/or the township manager or the township board feel as though, and let me give an example of a department, and again, I'm going to use the police just because I'm there, I was there.
And Joe, you mean non-union, right? You mentioned union, but you mean non-union.
Non-union position. If I said union, I apologize. You're correct. The example that I give is just history with me. If I always saw this happening, I tried to give my best at every position, because that's, that's, was in my DNA. I went up the ranks, up to lieutenant, now I never was a deputy chief. I went from lieutenant to chief, which, whatever, I mean, that is what it is. But would I have had the same oomph in me, the same want, the same drive, the same, do as best as I can, if I would see outside hires continue, let's just say? Even, this means a lieutenant would go outside also, along with inside. So, if we can't find somebody on the inside, I mentored somebody, I trained somebody, I saw a star rising. Okay, I saw somebody rising. I saw what they did, I saw their work. I was able to mentor an individual that I believe should have been the next chief, and that's fine, it is what it is, whatever happened. But I did my job. And if we can't find somebody within, and Derek knows if we have a problem with the department somehow, when I say the department, you know, that department, the DPS, the rec, the this, the that, and we may have to go outside, then we may have to go outside. I mean, that's an issue for the board and Derek to deal with. But I just feel we should have in this, that first, we will look from the inside and post it however you want to post it, that's semantics. And if, for any reason, the township manager or the township board believes this should be looked at inside and out together, and have that reasoned, because you always, you know, you can have both, the whole thing, it's not one or the other, it's both, or, start with the inside, then they can do that. They have that ability. See, the board and Derek together should have the ability to say, "You know what? Unfortunately, I just think because of the issues we have had, and we should go outside also."
Majority vote, right? When you say the board, a majority vote of the board.
Yeah, that's us. And Derek would give his recommendation to us and say, "You know, Joe, I feel that we've had some issues with the top three guys in the, in the whatever widget department. And the top three guys in the widget department will be applying for this head job in the widget department. But I really feel it would be in the best interest of the township if we go outside along with inside." And then, then the recommendation will come to us after that commission and Derek interview the individuals, and then it would come to us for the vote. So I first believe, I think it's very important for morale, I think it's very important. Now see, the police department, and, and, no offense to the fire, they are, aren't really quasi-military set up, but somewhat. But the police department is definitely quasi-military, and, and the rank system. And that's how they do it. They take it from the ranks, and their job as the chief is to mentor somebody, to train a couple of them, and have redundancy, too. So with that said, I agree with you, Mickey, and I think Margaret, Mark, I think we're all on the same page on that. I know, Kevin, your opinion is, this is good, let's go outside for everything first. I get it, I respect your opinion, I just feel.
That's not my opinion.
Oh, that's not, okay. Then what we can do is, that's what I thought you just read. You said that you liked how they did this, you liked how this was.
Well, what you say is semantics. What I'm saying is, any non-union job should be posted outside in a newspaper, like it said, it has said since 1993.
That's what I'm saying, so you're, you're not in agreement with what I'm saying?
No, that's not true.
Oh, okay.
You can be both. You can be both.
How, how can you be both?
What I'm saying is, you post the job, because that's what's fair to the taxpayer, that the taxpayer knows that there's a job, there's a posting, how much it's going to cost the budget, the taxpayer should know. And then, you have the choice to interview internally, or you have the choice to interview anybody that might send in a resume. But you don't have to interview anybody, you know, if you don't see a resume you like, you don't have to interview.
I'm not saying everybody gets an interview either. What I'm saying is, who gets notified? And you say notify inside and outside at the same time, that's fine, I respect your opinion.
No, what I'm saying is, it needs to be posted. That's the point.
Posted inside and outside, is what you're saying?
It needs to be, we'll say, you can post it publicly.
Right.
It needs to be publicly posted, so the taxpayer knows what's going on.
For anybody to apply, inside, outside, across the river, across the United States, anywhere can apply.
Correct, correct.
And that is not what we're saying, that's all I'm telling you.
So you're suggesting that it not be posted publicly?
I am saying, you post it within the workers first of that department. And if the township manager or the board feel that we need to go outside the department for the promotion, then we go outside and post it in the paper, we post it, I don't know, wherever else, I mean, there are some sites you go on, you post them, whatever it is. That's what I'm saying. So that is different than what you're saying.
So, what I'm saying is, that you post it publicly, so that the taxpayer knows what your, what the job is, what the pay is, what the consequences to the budget are, all of those things that are, you know, reasonable and fair to provide for the taxpayer. And if you choose to only interview people from the inside, that's fine. If you choose to interview people from the outside, external and internal, that's fine. The commissions, historically, have had the role of going through those with the help of the township manager and the board to come up with candidates.
Okay, well, I guess we're, we're not in agreement of what, what I feel you're trying to say, but that's okay. I understand what you're saying, I respect it. And I'm telling you that, no, I don't want it posted first publicly to anyone to apply. It's nothing to do with transparency, it's got nothing to do.
Sure it does.
Oh, I don't.
I don't, that's not the correct verbiage for what we're talking about.
I don't think you're being transparent if you don't post it publicly.
So.
So an internal posting is a public posting, but it's specifically for internal candidates?
Yeah.
As we discuss in the meeting, we go over the pay range in the meeting.
An internal, an internal posting means that the job can be posted in the fire department lunchroom, and nobody else knows about it.
Well, nobody else knows, because they're, they're not who we want to apply, because we have that right. And I want to throw something else in, let me, before we go backwards.
What I'm also saying is, what is best for the taxpayer? Shouldn't the taxpayer have the opportunity to look for the, for the board or the commission or the township to look for the very best candidate? What happens if we ended up in an awkward position where we've only posted internally, and we don't find anybody internally that we want to, that has the qualifications?
That's what we just said, the next step is to go outside.
Okay, you've created an awkward, talk about, you know, an issue with morale. You've created an issue where the morale is that you haven't found anybody internally, you're telling them that we haven't found anybody internally, and that we now have to go outside.
That's how it works, that's how public safety has worked for years.
Then what's the problem with posting publicly, and then having interviews?
Because you're damaging your morale just by doing that. You're implying, so I'll give you the example, just as mine, police. So I would never want to post my lieutenant position, my deputy chief position, outside. Why? Because I know for a fact that my current command staff, my chief, my deputy chief, my lieutenant, have gone above and beyond with consistent training of their officers. So much so, that there's a laundry list of training that all of these men and women have gone through. So they are more than capable of moving up through the ranks. And me going outside, or the commission going outside immediately, is an absolute implication to that rank and file, that they are not qualified, because we're going to go outside and post this, rather than look to them internally, when we know that they are more than capable. Additionally, I consider, I don't know, I also ran on transparency and fiscal responsibility, and I don't see, I guess I take a little bit of umbrage to being, having implied that I'm not transparent, but I'll also say that, in this instance, if we know for a fact we have internal candidates, why would I flush $500 down a toilet for an external posting I don't immediately need?
And Margaret, I know you're transparent, I'm one of the most transparent people you'll meet.
I just think that, here's the deal, we have differences of opinion of what we feel, and how we should promote and/or hire non-union employees. So, Brian, then, for us to make a motion on the changes, go ahead, you were about to say something. How do we then make a motion on the changes? I've heard all the changes, it appears that, what?
You're going, you're not going to have any more discussion about this?
Oh, yeah, we can discuss it, sure. I'm just asking how we do this.
Mr. Supervisor.
I'm sorry, may I have a comment before we get to, because we're going to actually get to.
No, we're not, I'm not done once we're talking to him.
I got you.
I just need to know first, how do we make a motion? We get all this information gathered, how do we make a motion then? And, go ahead.
No, so, once you finish your discussion, and we move to the action item, yeah, you're going to have to make a motion listing what you're mending within that policy. We don't have to, you know, we're not redoing the whole policy, we're just have to list what you're changing within it.
Anyone can make the motion?
Anyone can make that motion, I just need a second from it.
Okay. All right, so what it appear, oh, Mark, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just want to make a comment, just on what Kevin's been saying. I, he's, he made a point earlier, and I kind of like what he said. If we go ahead and do the external, I mean, just put the publish, publish the, the position, right? We get resumes, we get where we get in, we get in. But he also made the comment that, if we want to look at the internal candidates first, we do that, if none of them are. If none of them are consistent or not, are never qualified, I guess is what I should say. Then we look at the other resumes that come in. I think the, if, let me know if I'm reading this right or not. But i- if we go out and bring all these in, you, you're saying that we might get somebody we might think might be a little more qualified. And then we can interview them or not interview them, but we're going to look at everybody internally first. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm, what I'm saying is what we've done historically over the years, I believe, is we've posted it in the newspaper, which is what has been the, that has been the position that the township has done since nineteen ninety-three. As far as I can tell, and that's the last, um, I'm sure that there's archives of how, how it's been in the past. So it needs to be posted, what we're doing. So we have an example of this time around and correct me if I'm wrong. As far as how many people are, uh, how many people are actually signed up to be the fire marshal?
I believe we have what, two or three applications?
Okay, so we have two or three applications. So let me, let me do a little history here. So back when the last, uh, I don't know whether this was two, two uh, fire chiefs ago, was the fire marshal, um, was that job related to the chief? The person that had that job?
Same as the chief's job?
No, I'm, I'm saying the person that was given the fire chief's job, was he related to the fire chief?
Was he related like?
By, by.
Related, you mean by, you're talking about like a, a relative?
Correct. Were they, was, was it a relative?
He's going to start digging up dirt now.
The relative to the acting chief previous, correct?
So he, he was a relative. Okay. And is there a candidate that is related for the fire marshal's job? That's related to the uh, chairman of the commission, fire commission?
The chairman of the, yeah, I believe you're correct there too. He applied.
So we have, uh, the po, so, so we don't have the look of nepotism. We don't have the uh, favoritism, nepotism, cronyism. Uh, we, we've all ran, we all ran for transparency. We all ran on transparent and accountability and best practices.
No one on there is related to me.
And that's what I'm saying. So we owe it to the public to be transparent and let them make, have, have some say in who we are picking. It's simple.
The public, no offense to the public. The, the public doesn't have a pick on who we pick.
The public should have, they should know which way we're going.
That they pay us.
Candidates are.
They pay us and we put people on commissions.
Right, they have a, they, they have, they have the right to know.
They can come to the interviews too. Yeah, you're right.
Well, that sounds like the last supervisor.
See, this is what I've been dealing with.
Kevin, I'm going to tell you something right now.
This is what I'm dealing with all the time.
I'm going to make a motion. Hold on. Nice to see you. Would you like to say anything before?
Joe, let me respond though. Let me just please, because he's questioning my integrity again. There is no one related to me and we have not picked the candidates yet. So you're asking us to disclose before we even pick them?
Okay, let's, hold on, please.
Don't question my integrity.
Let's, let's go back and look at history. When Joe left.
Hold on.
Was there, was there, was there, was there a police commission choice, public meeting when the chief was chosen after you, Joe? Was there a, a public meeting?
No, that's why we're trying to.
Right, there was no public meeting.
That's why we're trying to make it.
What's, we're, we're limiting what the public will know. That doesn't help, that doesn't help. We, we have shrunk over the last two, three, four years. We have shrunk commissions down to doing, being rubber stamps in my opinion. We have, we've gotten rid of commissions making decisions on candidates. We've given them, we've come up with a special, uh, this was the last, the last board came up with a special commission that was rigged so that the supervisor could pick who he wanted to be on the commission. I, I think that this is just taking us down the track to
Okay.
Less information for the public, less transparent. And we're going to find ourselves, we already are in hot water. We have litigation, you know, that is ongoing for the last how many years because of, not only, but because we didn't follow good policy and procedure.
Okay, let's.
Joe, I'm an officer of the court. I can't have him questioning my integrity like this.
Everybody cool down here. Jameson?
And it's wrong.
Jameson? You missed the debate. Why don't you tell us what you'd like to see three point six saying? And then we'll move forward.
Well, I, uh, I do think Kevin has a good point. I think, and obviously I missed, obviously the most heated portions of this exchange, so I apologize for that.
But yeah, in spirit. You were here, don't worry.
So, yeah, the, what I would like to see, and I don't know what you guys have discussed over the past few minutes because I was driving. But what I would like to see is a public process for the selection of candidates, right? And I think at some point, that's what our procedures.
It is right now. It will be public. Every interview is open to the public, period. That's already set. We changed that.
Okay, so.
That's in.
That was one of the concerns I had. Um, I, I don't really care about posting vacancies in newspapers. I'm not concerned about that. I don't feel strong feelings about it. Um, I do like the idea of giving the board or commission the authority to look for candidates inside and outside. Um, I think that's important. Whether we look inside first and find no one that meets the criteria, then look outside, I'm, I guess is.
That's what the, I'm just letting you know, that's what four of us already have felt or stated. There's four of us that I think we're on board with that.
I, I, so originally when I was.
Or at least three then, Mark. I'm not George Wade.
No, I said, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just, I just want to make it clear.
When I was originally elected five years ago, nepotism was something I was concerned about, right? And I still am. However, I have come to realize that Groseal is an extraordinarily small island, right? And you're going to end up with people with relationships inside departments and township hall and all that other kind of stuff. So I don't think it necessarily needs to be a total disqualifier. I do think it needs to be thoroughly scrutinized though, right? Like if my, if my uncle's the township supervisor and I get hired unqualified to be the township deputy treasurer, that's probably something the board should be significantly concerned about. But I don't think we should necessarily completely disqualify anybody for family inside the government apparatus just because it is, it is a small place, right? And if, if this were Detroit, I think you could do that. I just, I don't know that you can do that.
May I ask you a question to, to make sure I understand? Cause you said two things there. I want to make sure it's clear. Are you willing to have in three point six that we first look internally for any non-union position? And then if, however you want to say it, the verbiage will come up with something. But if it doesn't work out, then to go outside? Are you saying inside and out at the same time?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with it e- either way, right? Because I think the commission's going to do the weeding and make the tough decisions. So if you guys, if the consensus is we want to do look inside first, then outside. Um, and that, that could be a decision based on, we want to keep the departments aware that there's upward mobility, right? And that we're going to give everyone their first look, you know, or preferential hiring like the federal government would call it. Um, I'm fine with that.
So can we, can you give this to, um, Jameson and Mickey please? So other than, it, it sounds like several of us are talking about the same type of thing. And I, when I rewrote this a little bit, it was just to be very similar to what Jameson just said. And I think what Joe said. I'm not saying that we can't post externally. I'm saying let's give these commissions, the commission liaison and chairperson can collaborate and determine internal or external. If the posting goes externally and it's an agreed upon process, then post externally. So again, I feel like we're giving that authority to the commission to do what they need to do, to do what we've asked them to do. And then they provide us with a candidate. They can then determine if they don't have an internal candidate, they can go external. I, I'm.
Can I push back on you a little bit on that, Margaret? Since you've got it set up so that the determination for hiring internal, external is up to the chairperson and the liaison?
That's what I, I read.
Well, and I, and I did, because I thought that's how a lot of this was written when I looked in it. But I'm okay with, because that gets too specific, say the commission. I'm okay with that.
I would prefer it be the commission just because that's a little more democratic. And I know, I mean, as liaisons, I think it's important to remember that we're representing the people on the commission, not representing the commission to the people, right? So, um, I don't know that we necessarily need to have special powers like that, if that makes sense.
Can, can we agree upon one thing?
I can take out from, from the word commission liaison and chairperson, just completely strike that. You could put a period after of the commission and then go from there if you choose. And I'm okay with that.
Derek has to be added to anything.
And well, I, I felt like Derek was at the top, so that's by default. Township manager with the approval of the township board.
And I meant township manager, not just Derek.
But Margaret, one, but Derek in commission.
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
This, these policies and procedures were rewritten over the last four years when supervisor Budney wrote them. And they don't, they weren't, uh, I don't think they were ever brought to the public for the public to discuss them out loud in a meeting. I think that we are Jerry, Jerry rigging and patching and twisting our policies and procedures to fit what we want to do today. I think that this really needs to be carefully thought through. I think that we have to go back and look what was done over the last four years and see how it uh, works with what used to be. I think we're taking power away from the fire commission and the police commission and giving it to a separate commission called, uh, the special commission. And when Mr. Budney, or whatever you want to, whatever it was called, Mr. Budney had that and he had those meetings without public, they, they didn't follow, uh, open meetings act. So what we're doing is we're messing with opens meetings act. We're messing with what we tell the town, the town, the taxpayers. We're not sharing with the taxpayers what we are doing. We're not sharing what it's going to cost the township taxpayer. So I think that we really need to look at this whole thing, uh, before we go fixing and twisting and making things so that.
All right, is anybody, okay, I understand what you're saying.
Well, can I, can I offer something real quick there? I, I think, I think you could be right, Kevin. Um, and if we need to do.
Well, thank you.
If we need to do a review of this entire process, I think, fine, let's do it. But I, I also think we need to continue to hire people along the way.
I'm not suggesting we don't.
So I think we have to operate off either what we have now or some version of that that we can approve relatively soon. And then, then if we want to do a deep dive into rebuilding this whole thing, you know, that's probably a separate working group. Uh, you know, maybe between you and, and the deputy clerk and township manager or something, right? And then, but I, I don't think we, I, I, I don't like the subcommittee thing either. I'll, I'll agree with you on that.
Subcommittee is gone.
The whole commission.
The subcommittee is gone.
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's what it says in nineteen ninety-three.
They are the township manager and the, the board member, I'm sorry, the commission will do the interview.
Derek and the commission.
Is that written down somewhere?
Read the, read the policy. What did we do for the last one? Okay, how about this? All right, stop, stop. We're going into an area that I think isn't really part of just what's in three, six. There's some, there's some things being dug up that we have a new board and we have a new supervisor. And the issue is if you feel that we should have another meeting, I'll have ten more meetings. I don't care how many meetings we have. But the bottom line is most of us on this board, and I'm sorry, Kevin, but most of us on this board would like to see it internally looked at first. I don't care how you word it. And then if they're not adequately set for the job according to that commission and Derek, then we can go outside the department. Because what you're saying is, and please understand this, Kevin, we have never gone outside for a lieutenant deputy chief. Under yours, we are going to post for everybody. So you're going to have the.
No, no, just, just look.
Now let me, no.
No.
You'll stop and I'll talk and you'll listen. Don't keep interrupting me until I'm done, then you can talk.
We're putting words in my mouth.
No, I'm telling you, this is what, you're not counted. You're not part of this then. We have a majority right now that would like to see it on the inside first. You're bringing up stuff that has nothing to do.
It absolutely has everything to do with doing it, following our.
Transparency, our nepotism. I'm, I'm the Jim Budney sitting here again. What?
I'm saying.
You're kidding me?
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Well, you just said it to me.
I said, you're, this is like Jim Budney sitting here.
That means like is as Jim Budney, it's the same thing.
That's the way you interpret. What I'm saying is you're not doing the right thing by the public. You're, you are not doing it.
The public doesn't hire the people we do. They put us in these positions to make the decisions.
Exactly what Jim Budney said, that this is the way that, look, look.
You can get up later.
The public, the public has a right to know what's going on. The Jim Budney tried to, he tried to make the commissions so that there was, the commissions, the commissions had less power.
Okay.
And the commi, then there was a small group of people that made the decisions on people that he wanted. And that's the same thing we're setting up here.
I don't think that's what this says though.
Well, read, read what it says.
Okay, so all applicants or resumes submitted will be screened by the commission or department head. So you could strike or department head there, but there aren't always departments who have commissions. And a list of qualified candidates will be developed. Copies of all resumes and applicants shall be given to the supervisor. Copies of resumes and applications submitted for positions in the department without a commission shall be forwarded to all board members.
Shall record as needed.
We can even change review committee.
I don't know what you're looking at.
The review committee and number four, we can change to commission. The manager and the commission made up of appropriate officials as determined by the personnel officer. We can strike that and make it manager and commission. That's what we have done now. That's what I have changed.
I, I think this really should be, we should sat, sit down as a board and go over this.
And where?
This is a sloppy way, this is a sloppy way to do business.
How often do you want to sit down?
If you want to do that, then let's do that.
You said we could sit down.
Of course. If you want to do nine more, I can do nine more.
If, if you want to do a full review of the system and the all policies and procedures or just chapter three or whatever, we should do that. Okay, but we should agree on something tonight so that we can continue to hire people.
We, we can continue to hire people with what we already have.
Well, don't you want to clean it up? You're just saying do nothing.
No, I'm not.
Kevin, you're even calling the fire department.
Currently works. And if you want to change it, then we really should have a committees to sit down.
Committee?
We should have a group of people sit down and go over this and look at everything.
I agree.
This hasn't been looked over by the.
But these, these small changes are better than no changes, right? You just said.
Small changes make, hold on, small changes.
Let me explain what I did.
Small changes are.
Hold on, hold on.
We got an opinion from our labor.
You asked me to talk for a second. Let me talk for a second. So you said the old policy was crafted by, uh, was crafted in a way to purposely exclude the public. We're trying to make small changes to make it more public friendly right now because we can do it quickly and make it better. If you want to improve the whole thing, that's fine. But that's a bigger job than seven people's. What's that?
How will it be better?
Well, it's going to return authority back to the commissions, remove the review commission.
Review that and commission and Derek.
We do internal hiring then external.
That's all we need. Let's vote on that right now.
That's what we're saying. I think we're, we're agreeing, you just want more.
Yeah.
Which is fine, let's do more, we just can't do it tonight.
What I'm saying is go back to what you had in nineteen ninety-three and follow that. What you're saying is that you are, that you're not going to, you're not going to post it publicly. That's what I'm saying.
Not all of us are prepared to.
So lieutenant position in the police department and the deputy chief in the police should be posted publicly for anybody?
You are.
Should be po, yes or no?
Don't give me a yes or no.
Is it a yes or no? Should the police department go outside along with inside for a lieutenant and a deputy chief?
Does the commission have the choice, does the commission vote on a lieutenant and a deputy? Yes.
They recommend. But in this, they can't, no, you, you superseded them. We're the township board. You're saying it's got to be posted publicly.
Everything.
Say yes or no.
I'm not going to say yes or no. It's not a yes or no question. You're not going to put me on the spot.
No, the answer is.
You are trying to put me on the spot.
Do you want the police department lieutenant and deputy chief to be internally posted and out in the public posted?
What has historically been done?
Well, historically isn't what it says here. That's why we need to change this.
This, when.
Historically, they're promoted from within.
Which is why I wrote this, Kevin, the way I did, giving it back to the commission.
Can't have it both ways, you can't. Can't have it both ways, you can't.
You are, you are saying, you are saying that.
Make a motion of the two items.
You are saying that because these people have come up through the ranks, that they deserve, that they deserve to be immediately put in as a deputy.
Absolutely, I am not saying that at all.
How will anybody know to apply for the job?
They are recommend, they are recommended to the commission by their chief or their next in line and/or both because of their skills, because of their leadership skills.
That's fine, but we also owe it to post it that.
Who do we, I, I'm, I'm, you know what I, no, you know what I owe the residents? I owe the residents a qualified person who I know has gone through the training and is part of a team, and that team looks up to them and considers them more than capable of being their next lieutenant or their next deputy chief.
Okay, historically, historically, Margaret, that's been done by posting publicly as well as looking internal at internal candidates.
It's never been done for lieutenant and deputy chief.
It has been, it's been in the newspaper.
Never, the lieutenant deputy chief? Never.
What I'm saying is.
Fifty-three, fifty-eight years, it's never been posted.
Can we call the question?
Yep, all right, somebody make a motion. Okay. Margaret calls a question. No, because we're not even, you can't really do that yet. It's only discussion, Margaret, thank you for trying. Does somebody have a motion they'd like to make?
Well, you can't make a motion during a discussion because it's not an action.
Yeah, we just got to finish the discussion.
We're moving to action items. I'm done with the discussion, let's move to action items.
Um, so it sounds like there was three things that we had a consensus on, which was, nobody likes the special committee. So remove the special committee and the commissions will screen and select applicants.
Along with the township manager.
Oh yeah, along with township manager.
I mean, the township manager is going to be involved, but we can put that in there with the township manager.
I want that in there.
Commissions will, uh, we want the commissions to decide if they want to vote externally. I don't think the right word is commo, I, I, I think it's recommend ultimately because a commission can't take an authority away from the board. So commissions will recommend, um, whether to vote internally, externally. Yeah, so we want them to vote, right?
You don't want it to come back to the board to vote on whether it goes external or not. You can shoot down any candidate that the committee brings to you, so the board still has the ultimate authority to shoot down a candidate.
Okay, so commissions will, commissions will determine. Okay.
So I could go up there and modify number two, like we just talked about, and say, based on the discretion of the commission, we're getting rid of liaison and chairperson, and we have some alignment on that. If you go to number four, and I say, and a review committee of commission members, not a special committee, a committee of commission members, you could get rid of committee and just say, and review of commission members.
Margaret, we can tweak the language and bring it to a meeting, but the motion will just be the high level agreements.
And that's fine, I just, I don't want to continue to argue about this.
Right.
I think most of us are in alignment on it. I think we do need to have discussion. I think we need to take out some of the perhaps rhetoric that is being used because it creates tension and it creates an offensive, you know.
Well, I'm offended that you're trying to do this.
Okay, well, you can be.
So let's finish the motion.
So there is.
A vote, and that's okay, I respect that. But don't disrespect us for wanting to do something else like we're, we're not being, we have no integrity, we're not being.
Yes.
It doesn't matter what we're being. We make the decisions, period, as a group, and this is how we're doing it.
The county and the township manager.
Yep, so remove the special committee, commission will screen and select people, commissions will determine how to post it. What was our third one?
It'll still go to the board.
Yeah, it'll still go to the board. You just get into kind of a, so with the, this was an argument I had during the police chief hiring back in 2022 or whatever, is you can't delegate an authority of the township board to a subcommittee. So, hear me out, it's kind of a little bit of a logic train, but, so let's say 20 people apply to be the police chief. And three people from the police commission remove 16 of those packets because they're like, hey, they're just not qualified.
We screened them.
Right? So now there's four applicants. The commission recommends one applicant and sends us all four packets, right? However, a subcommittee that is not a elected or appointed group has removed 16 applicants and therefore potentially removed a decision from the commission and the board, which was always my, my argument as to why the commission itself should review.
That's what we want.
All packets, right? So it shouldn't be a subcommittee.
Derek and I have done that, there is no subcommittees, it's the commission now.
Hmm.
And, and now we, that's the point. I made a decision, the decision was made, there will be no subcommittees, but we had to put it in this policy.
Uh huh.
Because we had to change it, because it said the word, whatever the wording is on here, it doesn't say commission.
So are we going to change, are we going to change all the other, the management handbook? Are we going to vote on changing that? Are we going to change other, uh, the ordinance that, uh, for the fire or the police department?
No.
No.
No, what we're changing is the policy on what we do for a non-union position.
And what, what about, aren't there other, uh, don't?
If it's applicable in other areas, we have to change them too.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
I'll ask Derek, but I don't, I don't know if it's applicable, like, why is it in our manager's handbook if it's in this?
Well, there, that's, policies and procedures intertwine throughout the township. So you're making one decision here and are we correcting it?
Manager's handbook is how the managers and what they get, this is how the board does things. Policies and procedures is how the board does things. The manager's handbook is the policy of how they do things.
So you'll be changing that?
There is nothing in there that says, their manager's handbook doesn't tell us how to hire people. This does, this is the policy.
Do you want me to, do you want me to provide an option on the overhead here? I mean, Margaret's got one, but I've also put some notes together after your guys' conversation. Would that be, would that be helpful?
If you'd like that, that's fine, whatever is helpful.
So, um, and, and pardon my notes because they're probably hard to understand, but township manager with approval, township board should utilize following procedures of filling any non-union playing positions. A notice of position vacancy will be developed. The township manager or his or her designate, so in the case that there's a department manager, there's a better suited for that, and the commission associated with the department for which the vacancy exists, so shall choose the solicitation of internal, internal and external or external candidates. The posting shall provide the title, requisition, description, education and experience requirements from pay rate, application deadline, and township's equal employment opportunity policy. If the position is soliciting external candidates, the position vacancy shall, a position vacancy shall notice shall be published in the appropriate newspaper, other newspapers or appropriate trade journals, position closing shall be published at proseal.com, such costs be paid for an appropriate department. And then further on three and four, we're utilizing the same organizational structure for all applications and resumes submitted will be screened by use of a review committee made up of the township manager or his or her designate, the commission associated with the department for which the vacancy exists, and then continue with that, they will this the develop, they will review the, the, the candidates. And then interviews will be conducted by the township manager or his or her designate and the commission associated with the department for which the vacation vacancy exists, and then it continues any additional.
Why, why are we doing this today? Could I, could I understand that? Why are we doing this?
Because we need to get business done, and this is how you do it.
Well, no, no, what, what does this have to do with hiring a fire?
Doesn't have anything to do with hiring a fire anything.
Because it's been a miserable process.
Why do we need to do this today? And why, what does it have to do with hiring a fire marshal?
It doesn't have anything to do, it has to do with this policy Derek and I got together, there were some things in here that we changed and I changed arbitrarily, I'm sorry, but we have that right along with Derek. And we didn't feel that some of the verbiage in here, um, was clear, so we came and changed things. And it seems like there's one, two, three, four, five, unfortunately, Kevin, that are in favor of maybe what this says here, that's what I'm telling you.
Why are we doing this today, though? I, I thought this.
We started, we started this process, Kevin, because we had an issue that there were concerns from people when we did the fire chief. I personally, correct.
We didn't follow our policies and procedures.
That's, that's debatable.
No, it's not.
It is absolutely debatable.
You did or you didn't.
There are, no, there are people who, no, there are people who interpreted that policy differently, so I am not going to say we didn't, so.
I think that's where we should have gone.
Now you're putting words in my mouth.
We should have gone to our attorneys.
I did.
And had it worked out.
I went to the attorneys for, for what.
I'm glad you did, you didn't do it for the whole board. How can I make a decision with not having all the information?
Let me explain to you what I.
I think this is unfair, I think this is wrong for the community.
That's fine.
I think it's wrong for the taxpayers.
And vote your conscience, you have that right to vote. I want to make sure the board understands this. I got a legal opinion.
This doesn't have to be done today.
Okay. I don't want to interrupt anybody, let me know when you're done talking, and I need to speak. Everybody good? Everybody's good? I got a legal opinion from our labor attorney. I also have another labor attorney that I use personally, I will tell you that, only because I've been using a labor attorney since I was the police chief. And there is nothing that says legally, I want everybody to know this, that we have to go outside of a department, we're doing everything correctly within the labor laws in the state of Michigan and probably the country that says if we go internally first, we could have an issue. That was brought up, now we know that, that was brought up. We got the opinion, and I didn't just get one opinion, I went to another labor attorney who I use, and their opinions were congruent, they were exactly the same. So with that said.
I went to the MTA.
Yes.
That, the Michigan Township Association, and I talked to one of their experts on municipal government, and they said that we don't have to do the things you mentioned, but it is in the best interests of the taxpayer to post the job outside.
Okay.
So that you don't have nepotism, which we know we've had a problem with. We have had, um, we had a situation after you were, uh, police chief where, excuse me, where the chief was chosen without board commission, the second chief was chosen without the police commission being involved, and the police commission didn't vote on it. So what is to protect the township from these kind of, uh?
Well, who's going to be looking at it and who's going to be reviewing, says in this new changes.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm not voting something.
You'll never change.
I'm not going to vote on something on the fly where we just wrote it tonight.
That's fine, don't. You can recuse yourself, you can vote no.
No, you're not allowed to recuse, I don't think.
You can do whatever you want right now. I don't care what you do because you can vote or not.
Why don't you do what's best for the township?
I am doing what's best for the township. They have voted us in to do certain things within the township. If you think I've got some nefarious way about me because of this.
Of course not, of course not.
It is in the best interest.
We're, we're looking, when you ran in two, 2020, the, the group said, it's not about what we do, it's about how we do it. And that's what I'm asking you to do.
And I'm doing it correctly, I feel.
I, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, how you do it makes a difference, and this is doing it on the fly.
Okay.
I think it's sloppy.
That's, thank you.
I'm done.
Does anybody?
Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, I'm just going to say it's, it wasn't on the fly, we've been talking about this for weeks now.
Months, not weeks.
Yes, okay.
It's been months.
Multiple.
So can Jameson, can he please make a motion?
We are now in the action item area, if somebody would like to make a motion, we're out of discussion.
I move to accept changes to the policies and procedures, chapter 3.6, in accordance with the currently displayed modifications made by township manager Derek Deal.
Second.
Second, and I have a question. What this says, I want to make sure it's clear to everybody, that we first have an option, if we'd like to go internally and/or, which is not or, it's both, externally, correct? There is that option. Also, the commission and the township manager will be the interview committee, period.
Unless there is a department manager that is better suited at, at my discretion to handle that.
That you think would be better.
We have non-union employees that fall under a different.
And that's what you said, I remember you saying that, okay. I want to make sure we're clear because that was the whole crux of this issue. We had a second.
That was, it was Margaret.
Does anybody else want to say something?
So, just to be clear, I'm, I'm sorry, just to be clear, you are not going to post this in a newspaper.
Post this?
Yes, it will be posted in a newspaper.
If we go externally, we will post it in a newspaper, and I also think there's other places like, that they post.
Michigan Municipal League, things like that.
Police, uh, yeah, there's all kinds of things we can post.
So you will not be posting it, period, unless you're hiring somebody from outside?
That would be correct.
You have the decision, the, you, the.
The commission has the decision.
Which commission?
And to go internally, and remember, it's not, it, it's not and/or, because when you go internally, you have to, externally is, is one big group. So you're correct, Kevin, if that's what you're saying, you're correct. They have the right to go just internally only, according to what the states here.
The, the commission associated with the department of vacancy exists.
So, so the, what's in the fire department lunchroom right now, has anybody read that yet on the board? Do we know?
Haven't you, Kevin? Because I just heard you went into Bob to ask who interviewed.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Kevin, ask your question. Ask your question, Kevin, I don't know the answer.
So.
Ask your question, that's fine.
My question is, is, does the board know what the job description is, what the pay rate is, what, what are the parameters for this job that is only posted in the lunchroom?
Well, yes, because we voted on, on posting it.
Derek and I created it.
We voted to post it.
When it was first posted, I got a call from you telling me that it was not, it was posted without your permission.
I told Derek to go ahead, I told.
But none of this has to do with what we're voting on right now.
They did it without my permission.
I thought they posted it without the, the pay, pay.
I did it with him with the pay.
I think he's talking about.
I know what he's talking about, I don't care.
Oh, the first one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said the one that's posted now.
What I'm asking is the one that was initially posted.
Oh yeah, no, they put that up, yes, that went up, and he never should have put it up, we, we.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to stop.
Righted the wrong, yeah.
What I'm trying to do is stop where a rogue person can go post anything they want.
No, no, this will change it right now.
And the board votes to post manager.
The first sentence with the approval of the township board shall utilize. And the board, for some reason, could go against everything because we can make any decisions we want. We really can. But that's why that first section.
Mr. Supervisor, can I please make a suggestion? You have to open it back up. I'd just like to ask, can we go ahead and amend the motion to come up with a draft for all of us to review tonight? Change, make the change we want. It is a draft. It's not policy at this point. We review it and then we can bring it to a board meeting or as another special meeting says, whatever we need to do to.
Well, we have, uh, we do have a motion and we have a second, so we have to vote on it.
Well, I could accept a friendly amendment.
If you want to accept.
Um, but I don't, I don't really, to be honest, I don't really want to. I want to get this done.
Right.
I understand, but I, I understand the contention too between, between some of the members. I understand. And I think we should, I think we should just make the draft up.
See this.
No, I understand.
It's pretty reasonable for us to understand this. I get it, what you're saying. But I would like to get this done tonight to right some wrongs and move forward. And if we need any other changes, we can always do that.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion.
And that friendly amendment is only a draft?
To make this a draft for, for, for review and then vote on it at another special meeting.
Okay. I'll, I'll meet you halfway. We'll accept it as a draft, but if it isn't overturned by a majority vote of the board, within 30 days, it becomes.
Okay, that.
You guys, I've been getting harassed over this since I started to hire the fire chief. He's even calling the fire department. I want it done. I, I've been getting email notes. I've been getting, you wouldn't believe how bad I've been harassed over this. And I'm just doing my job as a liaison. I want it done.
Jameson, what, what do you want to do then?
Uh, I'm not going to take the friendly amendment. Sorry, Mark. I just want to get it done, man.
Okay. Then we're going to make a vote. The action item is to take a vote on the changes that the township manager has displayed on the overhead that we all see in front of us. Is that correct? Uh, Brian, that is the motion on the floor. Okay? Let's do this. I would like to go down the line with this one. Okay, Mickey?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Okay. Mark?
Uh, no at this point.
Okay. Margaret?
Yes.
Yes. And Joe is a yes. So we needed four votes. This will be now, um, I'm sorry, motion carries. Motion carries. So, I mean, we get that. This will be the new policy for these points. If you feel that we need to address other things, we can always address other things. But I think this is adequate. I know things got a little heated here. Um, I, what I don't like, and I will tell you this, I don't like digging up some of the past that, that we as the board really weren't a part of. I don't like some of the things, and I apologize if I got a little loud, but I have to control this meeting and make it move forward. And that's the only way to do it. So with that, the motion carries. This will be the new policy, um, for 3.6. And once again, um, if there's any other issues, we can bring them up and we can talk about it again and we can do, have the same old party we had tonight.
Yeah. And just as a, I guess, a, you know, this is, the board has the authority to change this stuff whenever we want, right? We could change this every month for the next three and a half years if we wanted to. Um, so if you are not satisfied with what was done tonight or think it's a half measure or you don't like it, we can always, you can always make a, a draft change, send it to everybody, put it in the board pack and then we can vote on it again in a couple of months, right? Especially if it's just a couple of words or an easy change or something like that. That's easy. It can even be on the consent agenda. Um, but I think it's important. I, I think everybody made good points, but we're, we're conducting the people's business and we have to conduct it, right? So yes, we have to be transparent. We have to be, you know, um, careful. We have to be diligent. But we also need to ensure the government continues to move along as we do that. I realize some people feel this is kind of a half measure, but that's.
Government wouldn't have shut down if we didn't do this tonight.
But that's, um, you know, a half measure is better than no measure. So.
Okay, let's move on here. No, that's fine. The vote already went through. Let's move on. Uh, we can do public, I think young lady, did you? Just, just come on up and you can, uh, let me know if I need to put my seatbelt on. Go ahead. Whatever you feel.
I liked all, everybody's arguments and I did look up the law in Michigan and it does say that for public positions, it is, um, left up to the.
Your microphone?
Oh, it is left up to the.
The, oh, there we go. Geez, I'm already loud.
Please say your name again.
Jaclyn Lash. You're welcome. And I'd like to thank you, Kevin, for your concern for the residents and transparency. That is very important to myself as well. Um, I'm going into law, so I've had the pleasure of reviewing many Michigan laws. And, um, it does say for public, uh, positions as far as like fire or police, um, it is common practice to post job openings to ensure transparency and to attract a diverse pool of candidates. Although these practices may be influenced by local ordinances, collective bargaining agreements, so on. So it's, it is, he is correct. Legally, it is left up to you guys. But you are correct in that I feel you do attract more of a diverse, um, group of people. I know when you guys had the police officer position, I, I wasn't here for the meeting, but I did watch it. And you guys, um, had two candidates and then, um, resorted to doing a sponsorship. I spoke with police officers in Wyandotte and Trenton and they had no idea we had an opening. And I've, they were like, wow, you know, heck, is it still open? I mean, because maybe, I mean, it gives an opportunity for people to move here too. I mean, they might move their families here. I've talked to police officers that don't live here. So I mean, do we want to hire more people who aren't going to live here? I mean, we could attract people who are like, hey, this is a great chance for me and my family to move here. Just a, just a opinion.
Ms. Lash, thank you and I respect how you feel.
Thank you.
I really do.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify from a police commission standpoint, that was posted outside and it goes to everybody outside and all those down river, Wyandotte, et cetera. We actually had an applicant from there, so.
I didn't say that you didn't. I'm just saying they weren't aware of it. A lot of people don't read newspapers. But I mean, we as the community can post it on Facebook and stuff too. If I would have known.
Well, the police department did as well. Yeah. So they, they posted. In fact, there are many, um, departments right now who have a lot of openings and they all do it the same way. They put it to their Facebook page and Groseal PD did do that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And they're, they're open. Everybody's are open.
Okay, I, uh, Mr. Bob, would you like to come? You said you'd like to say something. There a cat stuck in there?
Got to get some WD-40.
Bob Z, Bilal Velt, am I on? Okay. Was very interesting meeting, first of all. I have, over my career, hired many people. I am a big advocate of promoting from within. And the changes that we did make, such as eliminate the special committees, which again was very important because we suffered a lot when that was done in the past and we're still going to pay for it. But I think the issue of whether you publish, whether it's by law or not, publicly or internally, if you write the rules for everybody to follow so that they're not, shall I say, deciphered. What am I going to do? I don't want to go outside, so I won't have to. And according to the procedure, I got that jurisdiction. But if you publish publicly and internally and you as leaders, all of us, and as managers did our job and mentored our people properly, they should have no competition. And that'll give you the option of promoting from within. Let's say, for example, if you don't publish publicly, let's say a taxpayer, let's say a voter, somebody that may have even voted for you. By the way, I voted for all of you. Somebody that may have voted for you feels qualified and wants to apply for that position, you just shut them out. There's no problem with public posting. As Mr. Flavon said, the control is there. The commission can filter who they want to interview. The board has the final decision. So as far as the issue of public posting, and Joe, I know you're sitting there saying, well, gee, Bob, why would you want to do that for the lieutenant and the deputy chief? If I get a public posting and somebody applies, I look at their interview and I've given my commission the authority to do what they're supposed to do. They don't necessarily have to select that person for an interview. But they did give the person the opportunity to apply and they did see the talent that was out there. So if you word it, and I'm not going to suggest this, but if you were to do just an open, internal and public posting, you still have the parameters in place and control the program to select who you want to interview. And you spent a lot of time on that. And I really don't feel it was that complicated. So those are my comments for what they're worth.
Thank you, Bob. No one else? Anybody behind the podium there want to come up? No, Jameson?
I mean, I'm not any taller than you.
All right. Okay. Um, I want to make just a couple of comments. Um, I know I put this out on Facebook. There was some question on the toll bridge tags that we have. And I want you to understand, if anybody's listening, we're trying to put this out in every way we can. The reverse 911 we did. Um, we did it through Facebook. We did it through YouTube. We did it through the electronic sign at the bridge. If you have a tag and that tag was obtained through the Groseal Toll Bridge, Mr. Smoke's time, that tag will still work. You can't add money to it. You can't have it, uh, you can't give, uh, or replenish it. It will go down to zero and then you won't be able to use it. That we had a legal issue. We first were going to just transfer all his files to the Groseal Township files. But legally, we cannot take your credit card and make it ours now. You have to redo that tag into the Groseal Township system. And you may have five tags, but you make one account for the five tags. If you have four tags, it's only one account. So to transfer over, it can be replenished automatically or, and I get it, some people, Mr. Bob even told me, he just goes through the toll booth and gives them money or gives them whatever and it replenishes his tag. You can do it any way you want, but you have to make an account with Groseal Township now. We have help down at the township. Mr. Freel put out a, uh, step-by-step, uh, was on YouTube, on the Groseal site, on everything. It's step-by-step video. You can follow that. Many people have done that. Uh, we have four people, including our township manager, um, a couple of workers. And Brian Freel have all been helping people get their account to the Groseal site. I hope that makes sense, Brian. Please, help me if, if, if I'm not coming out with it right or.
No, that was, that was perfect. Yeah.
Oh, I know, perfect. Um, okay. So I just want to get that out there again, if anybody's listening. Um, this is very important because there will be a time when your tag on the Mr. Smoke side that you got it will go down to zero and then you're done. It will not be able to replenish at all. And that makes sense? Are we good?
But you can still pay at the booth.
You can pay at the booth if you like. You don't have to put your credit card, um, on the account, but you have to make an account to have your tag work through the Groseal system. You can go through the booth, give them a check, Groseal Township, give them cash. Or you can even give them your credit card at the booth if you like to add to your account. But it won't add to your account right now. If it's on the old system, we need you to go to the new system. And we're asking you to do that before the bridge closes because here's the concern. If you're having problems when you go through, then it backs up the traffic. Look, I get it. We're going to have issues anyway. We're trying to minimize your issues and explain to the people how to make this a smoother transaction for the six weeks to two months that the, uh, county bridge will be closed. And that's one of the reasons. Derek, do you have anything on that?
No. Oh, it was a good, uh, good explanation. So, uh, we're here to help. The, uh, the bridge is there to help, um, the bridge staff. Um, so if you need assistance, stop by the toll bridge or stop by Township Hall and, and we'll do our best to help you.
Okay.
It only takes us a couple of minutes to do it, um, or call us and we'll try to walk you through it. So.
Did we get the tags we ordered in yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, um,
Yeah, can you just comment on that?
We need to order about 500 more.
Okay.
Because we've actually had a, a large number of people requesting, uh, new tags and also additional tags.
Yes. So we did get ordered 500 more. We had a thousand originally, but we're, we need more.
I had a, a resident come ask me, uh, I guess he came up here and filled out a form and needed a tag, but he said he submitted the form and didn't get a tag. So I wasn't sure if.
Yeah. So you submit the form, you don't get the tag right away.
Okay.
They have a stack of them this thick that they're processing. So once it's processed, they'll call you when it's available.
And so the board members know, we hired one individual for data entry only and another individual we're hiring for data entry, you know, 40-hour a week job, uh, which is, it'd be a, um, temporary.
They're temporary seasonal positions.
Oh, no. Temporary full-time, yeah, seasonal. So what we're trying to do is get people at the bridge that will help out. Again, your friend, whoever called you, they are so backed up that you can't get a tag until your form is entered. And they got to enter each form individually, which it's all about time.
Yeah. So to answer the, the audience's question, your, your old tab will work, but to, to the supervisor's point, it no longer will be able to be loaded with available money unless you go in and, and submit your new information on the township websites. Absolutely.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, I updated mine and it already reloaded as well.
Okay, thank you. That's why I didn't help you to switch them out.
Nope. No, no, they all work.
And, and when you put your information in, you just put one of your tag IDs in there and any that were on your account, let's say you had four tags in your household that were under one account, it'll pull those over. So.
I like it. It actually shows how many more times we can go through the bridge on what we have on the card.
You know, Mickey, good point.
Yeah, I like that.
Let me make a comment. They convert your money to crossings and are they going to keep a balance? We tried to ask them. This automatically converts. So it's $3 a crossing by tag. So if you have 30 crossings, you actually have $90 on your balance. It might say $1 in there because you have 91 and 30 crossings. Does that make sense? Now, is the company going to also add balance in, in money or still the conversion will be the same?
The conversion will be the same. I don't mean, I don't want to confuse things by telling them that if you have money loaded on, it'll take whatever balance you had cash-wise and deduct that from what that reload would be that, that probably don't need to understand.
But what you see crossings, you have to multiply that by three and that's basically.
The dollar value.
And the balance.
Right.
You add it to your balance. If it's only a few dollars and that's the total amount of money you have in that system.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much and the audience, thank you.
Did you miss the ordinance for the, the, um, the bridge ordinance?
Oh. That was last, that was a meeting or so ago.
Oh, it was on the, it was on the page for tonight.
No. That was the last meeting.
Oh, you may have got the last meetings page. Are you talking about the commission that we created? The commission?
The commission and then, yeah, the ordinance changed to put the bridge in, the commission.
That was previous meeting. I'm sorry.
And so it already is done?
Correct.
It's already signed?
Um.
Or do we have 15 days?
No, where, where are we in process?
The publication, when did that take place?
Yeah.
Uh, publication will be Sunday, well, yeah, Sunday. Uh, so it'll take place on Monday.
Take effect Monday.
Okay. So how, what do we do if we, I, I'm concerned for, um, myself and the residents for this severability clause.
Oh, is your mic on?
I don't know how to do it. Push?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm actually wrong with that because our board meeting was last week. So it was published this last Sunday. So it took effect on Monday.
Yeah, it's, it's showing up on the, on the township site as not being signed or anything in.
And I mean, I just checked. It is on the board. Today's the 23rd, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it says.
So Brian, is it in effect now or?
Yeah, it's currently in effect. It took effect on Monday.
Oh, last Monday?
Because the severability clause is very concerning. And I think it's because maybe you guys are aware of, um, the, the conflicts and if it's the legality in charging residents to have no access when the public bridge is down. Because the current, um, bridge and waterways law and the highway, the Public Highway Act in Michigan, both say that you have to provide access to taxpayers, to their residents. There's been one in Ohio and in Upper Michigan that had to provide a floating bridge.
I understand what you're saying.
So, and I mean, obviously this was, this was purchased was possible due to Jamie Church's 5779 bill, which initially she said it was, so we'd have two tax toll-free options. And then it was repealed and so now we have to pay tolls. So I just feel like the taxpayers had to have a millage. We had, you know, uh, I, I mean, we didn't have a lot of options to buy the bonds because it wasn't like widespread. And then we have to pay tolls too. It doesn't feel like we're really getting anything back.
We made a form, just so you know, Ms. Lash, we made a, the formula came up with our, uh, financial people. And that formula had a couple of options. One formula was to keep the millage to the people lower and still collect tolls because I have to tell you the truth. It's not just Groseal people use it. So it was spread out.
Well, I think just the residents should have a discounted or no toll. If we live here, especially when it's closed.
Let me explain at least just where the formula came from. Or no tolls at all and a higher millage, but we didn't think that was fair to you because of the higher millage.
Well, it goes by property tax, right?
Yes, that's correct.
We're already paying a lot. Yeah.
And that's why we went, and that's why that passed. So we have a lower millage. I think it's 1.67 is the current one right now.
I'm just saying in times of necessity, because that is restricting our access when we don't have another option, as you know. And because of the sever, severability clause, it listed bylaws, acts, constitution. So we'll have no legal reform to even fight it.
So I think the, the bridge commission that you're referring to or that, that ordinance has to do with establishment of a commission that would.
But this says the commission has the power to, because right now the law has stated that if you use public funds or and, uh, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the lawsuit, when they tried to do, they didn't do eminent domain. They tried another way, which was the demise of why they didn't acquire it in 2006 and then up until 2010. But, um, right now it says that if you use public money that is granted from the state or federal for any maintenance on a bridge, it is a public highway and it cannot be told. That is the law currently.
So it's not state or federal funded though?
No, but, but they said in that lawsuit that they, one of their, one of their, um, one of their ways to, to convince them was that we have the power to maintain the bridge through grants and these things through the state. So that was like a selling point.
And that's what we've done. We have, uh, applied.
And so I seen the grant proposal and everything. So if you use grant money, it is a public highway. That is the law in Michigan.
And I got to ask you this, and please don't misunderstand this. Then what are you saying we needed to do? Because we did get our attorneys and got legal opinions on all this.
Yeah.
What is your, what are you saying then, because you feel it's a public highway, then what does that do?
You can't toll it.
So the toll bridge has to be free, you're saying?
Well, I think a good compromise was to work something out with your residents and that's the whole world.
I understand what you're saying. No, now I understand what you're saying.
Know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't want us not to.
It's a compromise, not a law.
Thank you. I don't want us not to get funds from it, but I also don't want us.
A bunch on toll, don't toll. A bunch on toll, don't toll, toll, don't toll.
No, I agree.
Here's what it boils down to, right? It's like the bridge costs a certain amount of money.
But it also profits a certain amount of money.
Well, there's, no, because it's going to be an enterprise.
Well, he didn't own it forever because he wasn't making money.
No, that, that went into the formula. You're right.
I think going to be funds.
We haven't even had that transparency. I would like to see his financials because you guys had a little teeny tiny window. I need to see those, what's, what's.
I'm pretty sure his financials won't be released, right?
Well, they're not, they're not.
That's a private business, but so.
But I have done research on his net worth and like different things that were public.
Yeah, yeah. The bridge, the bridge makes money, right? Yes, absolutely.
It better.
The way it's set up for us is, it is an enterprise fund, right?
But I mean, the bill, we couldn't have bought it without that House bill that originally was going to make it toll free, but that's not good for anyone because why would we buy it if it's toll free and then we have to spend our money in, for everybody? But the residents who are paying through a millage, you know.
The House bill, the House bill was allowing the township or does allow the township to operate as a toll bridge.
For, the purchase has a toll bridge.
No.
To operate it as a toll bridge.
Well.
Because the township is a township, but we don't own roads and we can't, we can't operate toll roads.
From Jamie Church's.
Okay, well, look to the bill.
No, I know it's from the bill, but I know it was repealed. It was definitely, it was definitely the original plan, you know, with the original plan was, she sold it as in the paper, even publicly.
And I am giving you more time because this is somewhat interesting. No, 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 I'm giving you more time because this is interesting and I think it's important for you to get your point out.
Does not allow for the purchase of bridges, uh, bridges.
I would look, I would look to the language of the bill and not what people say about the bill.
No, no, this is, this is a direct quote from Jamie Church.
I understand, but I, I would look to the language of the bill.
No, I understand the bill's been reformed. I'm not arguing with you there, sir. I'm saying that it was reformed, but the initial, the initial motivation was to, and I quote, allow for the purchase to relieve obstacles. And lessen the financial strain on the residents. So where's our relieving of obstacles?
We will be reviewing with the commission after, no, we will be reviewing. I have told this.
We'll be applying for the bridge commission.
I've told this to 100 people. After the first year, we would be neglectful to do anything. Even not saying we're going to do something at the first year, but we still would be neglectful to even try anything before the first year to see what the revenues and expenses are to Groseal Township.
Right, well, I mean, you guys got that obviously in the financial disclosure when you bought it.
So.
Have those numbers, but I know what you're saying, but it is something to take in consideration because that severability clause, um, I don't know if there's consideration because we didn't, uh, uh, sign it, like you said, because it's a commission, but. Um, I don't, I think that was extremely scary verbiage, in my opinion. So, thank you so much for listening.
No, no, thank you. No, that was important for us to hear from you. That's why you got, I gave you some of Bob's time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Don't, don't think you're coming back up either. All right.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Good night. All right, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll pose. All right, we're done.